Seven o'clock PM. Brokaw.
Village Chairman.
I am here.
Commissioner Rossing.
Present.
Commissioner Meissens.
Present.
Commissioner Pernille.
Here.
Commissioner Kappa.
Present.
Commissioner Fraznolani.
Here.
Commissioner Brankowski.
Here.
And for the record, Jeff Schreiter.
Present.
Okay, we're gonna approve the agenda, but it has... It's gone through some changes in the last five weeks, so we just want to do a little adjusting so that we're all on the same page at the same time. First of all, good to see you all. I missed you last month when I was home in my bed and Jeff took care of you. And, uh... So we'll be doing a little bit of what I had intended to be a part of the agenda last week, month, along with what you already have discussed and other stuff. Okay, and new stuff, so... Under Communication Correspondence and Workshop, I do have contacts and a letter from Aldi. Also, you should have a fact sheet from Kroger's. I just have a little bit to share with you both of us. Old Business. I want you to, um...
I'm gonna do that.
Updated market study.
Yeah. I want you to scratch comments from New Haven planners, Aldi's, because I'm gonna cover that under Communication Correspondence. And we'll be doing an updated market study. That, Munka. And B, under Old Business, will become Explained Updated Grocery Retail Compartment. Sounds like grad school. Okay, um... Then we will go to New Business. That would be Code Enforcement Efforts. Sidebar, um... Brian.
Yes.
Did the village president make it back from town today?
He did.
Okay. Uh, and then... B, under New Business, would be Off-Street Parking and Loading. And both of those will be done by that plan. And we'll follow with Parking Success Discussion, Engineers Comment, and everybody will meet our new engineer.
They have a new student right into science. Who will make science items soon.
Would that be where I'm gonna bring up the discussion, where I was coached by the community members?
Um, yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
I'll take it.
We can put it in that part.
D, um... How would I put that? Uh, signage regarding, uh, street change to Reverend Matt's name. Name change too. It would be either Delaney or Elk. All right. Anybody else that would add? If I had or change?
Um, has the council or the planning commission set their calendar for next year?
The council, I wouldn't know.
Have we set a calendar for next year? And I guess we should, I think we should add that, because obviously there's, um, dates that planning commissioner is not going to... It's gonna come for holidays in 2018. We should probably publish it beforehand, so if somebody wants to come, they know when they're coming versus us canceling the meeting for the 4th of July.
So that would be, um...
E?
Updated calendar?
I've stated about that in the cover, I didn't know.
I never thought about it. Because we haven't missed too many because of holidays. Okay, all right.
I'd like that also. Addments for discussion, just general communication.
I had written all over my paper on here, so let's get this together. Anything else to add from anyone else? A motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Not anyone opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes from November 7. Motion is in order?
So...
Support.
All in favor of approval of the minutes from November 7?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Okay, um... Communication Correspondence, contacts from the outside world. After our meeting, not last month, but the month before, after the village chairman came and gave us a little challenge about growing this village and he wanted us to be the front. We should be bragging on our town and presenting it. The planners are working on a particular presentation so that we're all saying the same thing. But, um... I had an opportunity to meet a development person who gave me a couple of leads. And after a bunch of telephone tags, I actually got a name of a person who could help us get before the eyes of some people. And basically, what is in here, and the reason why I gave everybody the copy, is that Aldi's gave us basically the criteria for a proposal. And then we had somebody drop by here once from Kroger's, and I wasn't here. And, uh, it took a while, but last week while I was home sick, I just dialed the phone in the middle of the afternoon, and a person answered. And, uh, they are interested in kind of like, you know, the... How the fashion stores are doing the pop-ups now? Kroger's is interested in doing small. The fact that we were small was not a problem. In fact, if we were small, might be a problem with Aldi's. But when you see that, except for population requirements and all that and stuff like that, they ask for it. And Kroger's is, because we're looking for smaller stores, she didn't know who came to our office looking for someone, but they still did express some interest. And I was wondering if you had your calendars with you, because we have two dates. First, the Aldi's date, both of them really is after Christmas, because it's Christmas. But Aldi's would like to have, um, like a visit, a drive-through. And the first date he gave was December 15. So, you know, none of this is a requirement, you know, for you to remember to serve on this committee, but it would be very interesting if we had, and very helpful, I think it would look good, if we had more than one person greeting these, you know, these individuals and driving around showing them what we had. And of course, the proposal that we're presenting will have already been received, so... The main thing, I did mention this to the village president, and he said to be sure to let them know that we are extremely interested in the growth. And there are things, you know, that we can do to make it more interesting for them. So, um... I wanna wait until next month, and I'm thinking about it for the Kroger's, because theirs wasn't until April anyway. And I'm not sure on that date. But Aldi's is... Did I say December again?
December.
December.
It's January.
You said they gave another date as well?
No.
Okay.
Can we let Jeff know what time roughly that would be? Would it be like during the day or evening?
I have to work that thing out. What I needed for the meeting, I asked him, is a date. So that, um, you know, at least people can determine whether they're even available on a time during that day, so... I know, I'm pretty excited about it, um, because I do believe...
He's looking to do it on the 15th?
That's okay.
15th is Martin Luther King Day. So I don't know if you guys are open?
It probably didn't matter to him.
No.
Do me a favor, leave it that way, I will call him. Because if... I'm generally not off work on my Luther King Day. And I don't mind, because I think he did the sacrifice so that I could do that on the level that I work. Leave it, let me see what his flexibilities are, because this ain't gonna take all afternoon. And if you're off work, that means you're out of town.
And Tom's close, so he's available on the day.
They don't come out. They don't come out.
It actually makes it better for me. And we need all of these requirements.
I think that's where we're gonna take a look at. Now that we have this set of parameters that I'm just seeing for the first time tonight, go back and take a look at the market study and see if we can identify some areas of acreage. I mean, we don't necessarily have the property for sale and ready to go. I think we can definitely show them the potentials of sites if they were interested in making people an offer. Because it looks like they're, they want to have a certain square footage, but it looks like they're also looking for a certain footprint size, because they want to be able to have outbuildings, kind of like the...
Right, I know, that's why I asked that question.
Yeah.
And the car helm.
I mean, it would really almost regulate them to that somewhere in that triangle area, right off of between Brashett 26 and New Haven Road. That's on General Business Commercial, I think it'd be the appropriate place to put it. And I think it's really where we have the most space to be able to accommodate them. But again, we need to take a look at some of our other options, other properties along Brashett. If we're gonna do that. If I could just add one thing about, um... I spoke with our economic development team this morning, knowing that you had heard from Aldi's. So, um, they would like to include Camille Silda on the team. Because Camille not only is our, um, she's our German company person, which Aldi's is a German-based company, but also she's working very closely with Kroger. She's got some good contacts with Kroger and is working in other communities. So she has connections with both Kroger and Y herself.
And she's great.
So if you have a name that you contact with Kroger, we might want to kick it back to her, see if, um, if she's familiar with who that person is. And if there's anybody else that she might recommend pulling in. But we have plenty of time, if we're talking about any prodate on that.
Gotcha.
But just like, if there's other resources that we could, we can bring...
Let Camille know how we'll be calling her.
We'll do so.
Yeah, because she helped us so much with that community luncheon we did when we brought all the business. Yeah, she was phenomenal. Okay, so if there isn't any other questions about that, we can move on. Okay, Old Business. So we'll do it all. That big?
I guess kind of dovetails right into the discussion on Aldi. If you remember, we came back with, we had a market study that we presented to you guys, put together. We noted that when we initially put together the draft, that there were some discrepancies in the grocery numbers in there. And there were some also comments about additional differences in traffic count. So John's here tonight to tell you about his saga, how he figured out what was going on with the data. It was what we suspected. But he'll be, it was, and he'll be able to explain what that is and answer any other questions. And if there's anything else you guys think needs to be in there, or other components, we can have that discussion as well.
Good evening, everybody. Just as an introduction piece, I am John Kokazi. I'm on Jeff's team of the County Planning Department. It's been a while since I've been here, but it's nice to be back and see everybody again and view faces. So as Jeff caught me up to date with what's going on with this market study, the manager, myself, and Jeff, we all worked on creating this market study for you guys. And there were some discrepancies about the, um, the specific grocery store numbers and figures that we saw on the retail gap analysis, which you'll see on the, I believe, the third page from the back. You'll see it later, just... So, and the original analysis...
Yeah, it's the one that's got the graph that looks like, maybe this one here.
Yeah, see, it's on the table right there. So the specific part that we were having issues with was the, um, the white portion of that table. And that white portion represents the specific market conditions that we are experiencing here within the village of New Haven itself, within the boundaries. When we did the original analysis, the gaps that we saw in every single category were very similar, except for the food and beverage stores, where that figure itself showed that you guys had a surplus of supply of grocery stores in the community, which we all know is not a fact. Like, that's something that is a need within the community, and yet the original numbers were saying that you had like a $12 million and $20 million surplus of supply. So like, what is going on with these numbers? So I contacted the company that we used to pull all this data. And we dug into the geography and how their employees' numbers and everything. And what they told me was, there's basically, this level of geography that is called a census tract. And these census tracts are not perfectly aligned with how the village borders are. And what was happening was, within the village borders, there were three census tracts. There were two in our boundary within the village boundaries, and there's one that was, that had a corner within the village, but most of it was outside of the village and actually captured the wire. That's just east of here. And that was skewing all the numbers to be much higher than what they should have been, and it wasn't representative of what the actual village was experiencing. So what I did was, I selected the two census tracts that actually are completely within the village of New Haven, and that would give us a little bit better idea of what the actual grocery store experience is here in the community. And redoing these numbers, we showed that there's actually a deficit of a $6 million retail gap. So that's how much demand there is within the community that's unmet, that people are leaving New Haven to go and buy their groceries to other places. And then based off of the economic census data, that $6 million gap represents about two smaller grocery stores, which that would be to approximately 31 jobs if those two stores were developed within the community. So that just shows you the type of potential that could be here, if something would want to invest in a small, smaller grocery store, maybe like an Aldi, or even something a little bit smaller, like a small mom-and-pop type of grocery store. And that's what we found in terms of completely different than what the original analysis showed. So that's something to learn and experience to dive a little deeper in terms of what the data is being aggregated from. So that, if you have any questions about that, so feel free to ask me. And I can go into more detail about any of the other figures that we have on this. But that's essentially how every single one of these are. The Trade Area 1, Trade Area 2, all those figures stayed the same, because those bolted the same geographies. But yeah, the biggest difference was that food and beverage store going to a favorable direction for the community.
Are the trade areas, are those equal to the census tracts? Is that what you're saying?
No, the trade areas, the Trade Area 1, Trade Area 2, you know, if you go to the page before, you'll see a map with like a blue and gray kind of weird shaped boundary. Those represent the approximately five and 10-minute drive circle. And that's also with the assumption that, if you look at the shape, it doesn't go much south, 26 Mile. We're figuring, we're assuming that there's kind of like a hard border, where most residents in Chesterfield are most likely to be going south right now from that area, south towards 23 Miles, who satisfy their grocery or retail needs. So there's kind of like a harder border there. You'd probably be attracting more so from the north and east and west of the community. So that's how we designed that boundary. So based off of those assumptions, that's how we established Trade Area 1, Trade Area 2, which are then represented by the green and blue sections of the table on that stage. And that shows that there's essentially demand in every single category for stores, except for food and beverage stores, because the wire, once you gather the trade areas, capture the wire, as well as other grocery stores, and then gasoline stations. The gasoline stations, in every single absence I've ever done, is always seen as a surplus. There's always like a surplus in gasoline stations. So I would really take that as a hard and true number of what the actual market is for those type of uses. It's just a court with numbers.
Two questions. The only thing I saw was that we have a deficit of... Or a surplus of sporting goods, hobby, book, and music stores? You gotta miss it.
Correct.
Yeah, it shows up there that is a surplus of that as well. So depending on how the definition is designed with that type of industry, whether it's like novelty shops, or comic book shops, or smaller, um, like a Rite Aid or stuff like that, like those type of stores can sometimes be captured under that type of definition. So those category names are quite broad, or like big dramas, but they try to fit industries within those umbrellas.
Robert, if I could just jump on to your questions. I think John explained how we define the trade area by drive time. I think your question, the granularity of the data that we're finding from our sources at the census tract. So even though we've drawn these areas, if this is, if a census tract is covered, we're including all of it in there. We're not taking, saying, oh, this is only 50% of that and dividing those numbers out. In the case of what Jeff was indicating, the portion of the village that has the mobile home park to the east is the one that's, that is in the Lenox Township census tract that runs all the way over to county line, and that did pick up the wires. So that was that, that was the section that will be included in the whole, whole of the village, skewed those numbers going that way.
Quail Run.
Is it Quail, is that the name of the...
Radio 26 then?
It would be what, it's whichever one, whichever one is in the village.
Oh, Metal Creek's in the village.
Metal Creek in the village, okay. And then, then the second thing I was gonna state is, is when you look at these industry groups, you see this AIX number next to it, that's a classification number. And you can get more and more detailed. If you go to a four-digit number, it starts breaking down into smaller categories below these. But we stayed at the three, at the three-digit level, because this tends to be the metric that we know site selectors look at. They generally don't go, you can go more granular, but as you go deeper, the data becomes more questionable. Is it really that accurate? If you're starting to take the, you know, if you take your hobby, the one that we've just said, and start breaking into independence, it could all be potentially tractor supplied, because they got tacked and bridled and different things that could skew it that way. Just a couple of observations.
So less detail is more, you're saying?
Well, the problem is, is maybe all of this, all of this information is survey data. So there's already a, there's already a percentage, there's already a degree of error within it. So as you start getting it down smaller and smaller, it all depends on, did they, you have this, you know, were they able to survey every business in the community? Is it just a sampling of those types of businesses in the census tract? It's, it's not perfect data, but it is the best data that's available. And it's basically what everybody runs on.
Were we able to expand those to the four-digit SIP codes?
We could take a look.
Target businesses, we know we don't have that with those specific SIP codes. So we show that we have zero, um, business within those SIP codes. I mean, we don't have to pick all the SIP codes, but...
Do we have, we have the ability, we can drill in one more layer of business analysts, I think?
Yeah, you have, um, business analysts goes three and four.
Okay.
And like you said, if you go to four, like the data's getting a little more sketchy. But we can plug it into...
We can take a look at those. We'll, we'll bring them to you guys and take a look at it and see if they make sense to include.
I mean, I could send you a list of SIP codes that I'd be interested in seeing those type of businesses here, to see if we can include those in, because they're gonna show zeros. Which obviously, you know, you would love, you know, like, it shows pretty nice if we got zero.
But it's also like, um, when it comes to like these type of business analyst type of things, it's the SIP codes, but they also take the demographic data that there is within the community, and they try to take, let's say, income, population, education, all these different variables. And they make assumptions in terms of what typically, um, these different types of markets demand in terms of product and services. So they, they build in like these assumptions into there. So let's say if we want to include like a SIP code that may not be representative of what typically is bought in a community like New Haven or like in Chesterfield or something else, may show that there's zero demand. So that's something that could potentially happen if we look into these separate data. But that's just something that can be representative of any type of data that we look at. So just for your information of how these things get developed and how to get those data together.
So I have, I have two questions. First, so we've adjusted our graph to not include the wire. But if they're, what about like the site locators that Jeff mentioned? If they're trying to find sites, are they going to be looking at the other data and then going, well, why is your data different?
And that's, that's actually one of the conversations that Jeff and I had, is like, that's one of the things that we're kind of assuming that maybe the issue in terms of why we haven't been able to attract a grocer or someone else that comes to the community, because are they looking at this large set of data that they're just doing a once-over? Like, okay, well, this community doesn't qualify, so I need the figures. Well, and that's where like this report kind of comes in, where we drill down into a little bit more specific type of analysis, and we show like, no, like your data's wrong, like this is actually what you should be looking at. So that's, that's what you can try to make this analysis, you can try to make your argument. So have the site selector come in, maybe talk about some of this data to them. That could help make your case and help them, help get that second look that you need. So, but that is a potential issue with why we aren't looking at it maybe.
And then how fluid or how frequent is the data updated? I know we just had a market that opened over at 27 in Brashett. I can imagine that would change one of the numbers somewhere.
That's kind of already out, it's been open?
Yeah, that's...
You've been no sales.
I believe it's...
Are we getting it now?
Based on the...
I was surprised.
Which is whatever, whatever they're doing with the economic census.
Be all time, I said.
Five-year.
Yeah, it would be.
It's shockingly...
So mine's only like a five-year type. Where they do the different projections?
The census used to do an economic census every five years, and they would, they would basically go through a poll businesses and communities and put that data together. Now they've kind of gone to a sampling system, the American Community Survey. I think the interval is, it may not be as complete of a sample, but they may be looking more frequently. And in what you tend to be working, there was a one, three, and it was a one, three, and five-year averages.
Yeah, so one year's obviously a little more marginal there than three, five is best. Three is a very frequent frequency level. But, um, I can look into exactly, I think these are taken in 2014. I think that's what these numbers represent. Because the company that we work with hasn't used the most recent of the data. It's gonna be 2017, and they kind of haven't, they won't release those till like 2018, for the 2017 stuff, so, yeah. So if there are no more questions about the analysis, or even if we have some later, I'd be happy to answer those. But if you look at the back of the page, back of the report, you'll see a new traffic volume map. Where it's loaded here than what we had before. It shows exactly what type of volume is experienced in every single road. And you'll see like just north of Main Street here on Brashet, you're getting about nineteen thousand, two hundred. Average daily traffic, adjusted average daily traffic?
It's average annual daily traffic.
Yeah.
That, that, that's, that's pretty much the marker. Those, all those numbers came from Semcog. So those are averages over a couple, over a period of one or two years. Depends upon when MDOT was out there doing them. But they, they're always, they're always taking new counts. So those numbers are, those are the most current numbers that are available.
And as we saw with the LV type cut sheet, it shows exactly what they're looking for in traffic product. It's one of those items they look for. So a map like this showing that, I mean, they probably have access to this type of information too. But now you have your market analysis and you can give us others to see if you do business here.
So is that twenty-eight thousand then at the corner of Main and Brashet? Do you combine the two?
No, let's combine them.
Those are per, those are, what those are is per segment. So if you're, if you look at, you've got, you know, twenty, thirty-four thousand come in or into the intersection, but then only, then everyone's splitting off and going in different directions throughout the day.
Right.
And that's including all directions coming. So those are.
So is it reasonable though to think though that fifteen thousand going down Brashet and thirteen thousand going down Main, that there's an accumulation of twenty-eight thousand on that corner? Yeah, okay.
So then I have to be eleven thousand going across 26 Mile?
Right.
If you have that full triangle.
Right, that's what I was, yeah.
Can you drill it down to north, south, east, west type of?
I don't, I don't believe Semcog has it available that granularly. It's, you can request it from the state, but there's a fee associated with getting that data, getting it that granularly.
Most, most of them are combined, but we have access to this data also. That we can try to split it through. Sometimes I do Eastbound, Westbound, go south.
I mean, God knows I've driven over all of them, I think. Has everybody met some, met some, I knew in January?
Yeah, he introduced himself.
He was here last, the last meeting.
I needed to meet him.
He was here with Chris. Chris introduced him to everyone. Any other questions related to the market study?
This is great. Remind me of a little master plan.
Yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out to us or ask me, I'll see you later.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
So you guys would be using this data in that presentation that Chris is looking for?
No, not necessarily. I think this, this was, I think what Chris was looking for. This is, this is something that we continue to hand and we give this to Kroger, we give it to Aldi. And it shows that we've done our homework and that we're, you know, trying to market ourselves. Kind of know what they're looking, I mean, we're trying to speak their language, I think a little bit with this.
Now, is this considered a final?
If, if you guys want to take a look at those broken, we can do a final with this. Or we can wait till next month and take a look at those breakdowns of the NICS codes to the four digits if you want.
Do we need the, do we need the breakdown in here or would it just be something good to have that we can?
I'd kind of like to see whether, if there's spots in there, if you can punch in those numbers of stores that, you know, we can directly go after, you know. Maybe we could, because we have total lack of any, you know, that they could go.
Maybe the expanded data could be just emailed to the commissioner. We can discuss if we want to add a profile or not.
If, if, if we want to consider that, I mean, we consider this, we could consider this a working, a working final draft. We'll get a PDF out to everybody with it. I don't know if we already distributed it to you guys or not, I forget. Because I have so many people, so. Did we, okay. And then if we make changes, if we next month.
Everybody on this meeting?
Yeah.
If we do make changes, then we can, we'll just redistribute a new PDF with those numbers out.
Do you think it would also be a good idea to publish it to our sort of village website as well?
Absolutely.
I sent it to everybody, yeah. You're reminding me of that.
Does it make sense to, if we're targeting stores like grocery stores, to make a, another custom kind of market profile that targets specifically grocery stores and one that would target specifically industrial or, you know, et cetera?
This is the fact sheet.
I think, I, I think we could do that. I, I think in the case, as we're looking at these two grocery stores, if we have site selectors in, and one of the things we will fall back and do over the course of the next month is take a look at these Aldi requirements and then take a look at what property we have in the village. And we can probably put together a, basically a portfolio for them to have that day they take a tour. And we'll assemble the information, we'll give tax information, ownership on the properties, those types of things.
That he, he was interested in was where they would be positioned, the basic of the requirements that they presented. Show me a picture of your village and show me where I would.
Where you're from. That, I think that we can give them some suggestions of where they could locate. And then if we have.
What did Chris say?
Have not gotten any feedback from Chris directly on this yet. If we do have any parameters from Kroger, that would be good to have as well.
So for Brashet, this is, this is good to be posted?
If you post it, and we can, we can give you a new one and switch it out if we make those edits.
Is this the same version that was sent to us via PDF or?
Yes, it was.
Okay, just the change in that table, right?
It was the change in the table, then we also updated, we changed the, the traffic counts map. The other one just had points and then we went to actual segments to a little more.
Do you want to just throw me?
Chris, we could add the raw data from the, from the report that we pulled and put it into an appendix.
That might work.
So we have access to like all the data that we have for retail analysis that shows every single sector. It does the four digit, and it shows every single leakage or, or surplus of there, so you can look at it.
This is not etched in stone. If, if I find a manufacturing company and, and they want a presentation made and what I'm looking for is not in here, I can call you Ted, this is what I found.
Yeah, we can tailor anything.
Yeah.
A lot of times like with these factors, we can always put like the actual ordinance, like the different ordinance facts, facts and process stuff for how the village does their reviews or approvals or anything too.
Yeah, and to Commissioner Fennell's point, with the general merchandise stores showing a retail gap of six and a half million with zero stores currently, it'd be good to know that breakdown to say exactly where is that six point five million gap that we could then have a more targeted effort.
Good, it's changed, thank you.
So then what we will, so just to summarize, what we will do is we will, we will load back, we will load back in to the appendix of this. We'll add an appendix page, we'll put all the raw data in there so that, so that their market study people can see all the numbers. And then we'll distribute that to you guys as a, as a PDF by way of email for the website. And then if we decide to add those four-digit NICS in January, we'll put out another, another revision and changes.
Well, and these will always be fuller because it will always be changing.
Those will be.
At least as a basis.
Or eventually there'll be a bunch of different ones. You may do one and I have similar business and I might be able to borrow some stuff out of yours.
Right.
Sweet. Any other questions, comments on the updated market study? We'll go to new business because we've done all this. Code enforcement and zoning ordinance review.
All right. As we spoke last month and as Chris was in front of us, he indicated that the village is trying to embark on a, on a new code enforcement process. Actually going out, trying to enforce code more so. And there were a number of elements that, there's issues that have come up along the way in terms of parking setbacks, different types of things that the planning commission and the building. Well, some things have come to planning commission, a lot of things have been administratively at the building department. But what we wanted to do is in light of what this, what the group on enforcement is doing is to walk through the ordinance and make any recommended changes that we feel are, that we feel would make the ordinance easier to administer, address the enforcement areas. And primarily, those are really our general business and general downtown business that we have the biggest issues in. Looking at any of the required site parameters for all of the different zoning areas, be it industrial, light industrial, what are those lock dimensions, the setbacks, the parking? We know that the previous planner had started to compile, compile notes on a number of those districts. I think we want to definitely take a look at those. I don't know that we need to go into our multifamily and all of our different residential, but we'll definitely want to take a look at the general business, downtown business, heavy light industrial at a minimum. Because those are really all the areas we have for growth and most areas we're most likely going to see development that's going to come to this group with a site plan and potentially requests for variances and stuff like that. We would like to streamline the process in such that more and more elements of the daily administration can potentially be done at the building department and not have to have so many things come to planning. And we'd really like to try to identify some of the things that have been issues that keep ending up going to ZBA. One of the examples we can talk about when we get into the parking is when we're looking at the downward general. We have a very strict number of parking spaces that we say we need per square foot for commercial. Yet we had a company come in stating, we can do it with three less, all of our stores work that way. We sent them to ZBA to get our, to get a variance for that parking. We would like to see some type of something, I, I think we would like to see, is what you guys want. We would recommend that there's some type of language within our parking regulations, this is an example, where if they're within 10 to 15% of what the recommended total is, that could just be administratively approved at the building department and not make a 30-day delay on things. So as we're going through these things, we want to try to look at what things we think we want to potentially relinquish a decision on that would make sense to be done administratively or things that we still want to have. Obviously, we still are reviewing full site plan reviews and those elements. But there might be some components in terms of signage, parking, landscaping and screen work. We might be able to build in some, I don't want to say wriggle room, but some room for flexibility in the ordinance where it can be administered that way. We're seeing a number, more and more of our communities trying to go that way as to not put a burden on the applicant where every time, we don't want to be, we want to be able to expedite the development process through. So with that, what we asked you guys to take a look at tonight, I know I sent a ton of paper out where you gotta look at, I won't look at the stuff, it's like really, it's like really gibberish. But we sent the off-street parking and the loading section to you guys. This is covered within the zoning ordinance. It basically regulates the number of parking spaces for different types of land uses. It regulates the orientation of the parking, the depths of the parking spaces. There's a lot of engineering technical stuff and I think that's why our engineer was here. And he was, we sent him a copy and he gave us his comments in terms of what could be, what numbers and figures should be updated in this. We're not looking tonight to come up with any master rewrite of this. We just wanted to put, let you guys know how we were taking a look at it. But then just kind of wanted to open up just more of a general discussion here of just issues that you guys perceive related to parking within the village. And then we can see if any of those issues can be addressed through changes that we would recommend. The plan of attack here is after we discuss, have you guys had a chance to review? We'll kick it back to the workshop, we'll craft language to bring back to you for review. And then if you were to approve that language as a draft, we'd like to kick it to council or to legal council just to make sure everything's good with the terms. And then ultimately, we would compile all of these sections into a set of recommendations for changes to something that we will present to village council. Because ultimately, they can make that decision to approve or make changes or however they will want to address our recommendations. So I was gonna ask you, Smith, if you had anything you wanted to add in terms of what you saw in the ordinance? I had to put you on the spot, but I mean, I know that you came tonight and if you want to get out of here, this will get you out of here really too.
Good evening. I'm, I'm gonna be attending all the planning.
Will you? Okay, excellent.
Regardless of if we have something or not, just for support, this is that no trash to the village.
Sure.
Yeah, we've been doing this for so many years. Streamline process, everybody on the same page. You guys have questions, we're right here, answer it, takes two hours, hour time, you know, no problems. So I went through the 515-101, the parking, you know, off-street parking and loading zoning ordinance. And we found a couple of things which really set the red flag right away. The parking stall dimension is eighteen by nine. And it's normally twenty by nine with a two-foot overhang. That means if you have a curb or sidewalk, the cars creep into the sidewalk for about two, two feet. And that's how you leave that eighteen foot behind you. And we all know here, everybody drives a truck. So really, you do need that twenty-foot space. Especially if you back up into the sidewalk, you don't leave a whole lot of sidewalk left. So our recommendation is make this stall twenty-foot long, nine feet wide. With the exception to reduce this to not, at eighteen feet in length if you have a two-foot overhang and the sidewalk, if there's a sidewalk adjacent to it, the sidewalk need to be increased from five foot to seven foot. That's why you keep a clear path of five-foot sidewalk at all times. On page two, and footnote 11, I stroked the last sentence. No, it's such a stormwater route, let's see that agricultural weight of the site. This actually takes into care of the storm, so the stormwater ordinance, so we don't need to contradict. I'm gonna leave Jeff's comments, not still as a topic. Then the illustration.
Are you touching on 14?
11.
Oh, 11, I'm sorry.
Five seconds. I regret 11.
Quite a sentence, okay.
Then the illustration needs to be updated with twenty-foot long and a nine-foot width. Minor comments about minimum parking spaces required. And I'll leave, I'll leave that to Jeff to look at and dissect it more. This is what we are accustomed to in other communities. And I just fed back these numbers. Page seven. Section B, barrier free parking standards. The numbers are good, but we need to cite the ADA Act, which, I'm sorry, American Disability Act, the current ADA standard. The numbers are still good, but we still have to comply with that. Follow-up page. Subsection 3, barrier free space shall be plus no proximity. And number four should be eight foot wide, not nine foot wide. And there's also a requirement, a new requirement for the barrier free parking spaces. They have to be exactly at 2% slope. We can't leave them.
Interesting.
You said 2%?
2%. Exact, they can't be motorized. So I would add that either on 30 over to 4, I leave that to you. Very strict in these requirements. That goes over to number five. The last sentence should be shortened. An axile shall be a minimum of ninety-six inches wide, period. Done. Done.
I'm sorry, you said we're on the last page?
I repeat, remember, I don't sort of stasis.
Number five.
G5.
Second one, friendship. Okay, thank you.
G5.
Just minimum 96 inches wide, period, correct?
Yes.
So a lot of these have to be covered in the ADA standards, right?
They are.
Does it make sense to reiterate that in our ordinance, opposed to just citing the ADA ordinance as a way as it changes, we don't have to keep changing ordinance?
It doesn't hurt, you can walk the entire section and just cite the current ADA. But for you guys to know, you have to have a copy of the ADA standards with you. I'm finding it, actually, we recommend it that way, we just cite it one time and cite it the right way.
Yeah. So the ADA standard is probably constantly changing, and as long as we, you know, cite the latest, you know, that's a more formal way of saying the latest ADA standard, but...
So if this commission agree to this comment, the whole section G should be completely wiped out and just reference the current ADA standards. If they're available, I like. Yeah, then you don't have to worry about it. That's the bulk of, I mean, the main comments that we had, but again, there are some minor stuff that we just, we just have to go. Appreciate it, thank you very much. Any questions?
Did I miss or can you narrate, including time we were parking lots together to keep traffic from going from lot to lot to lot versus traveling the back end of a property to keep the traffic off?
In terms of shared access drives and reduce curb cuts out to the main road.
Yes. So people get in front of people and to get ready for the lot next door.
I think it's something we would definitely encourage if we had a large enough development that comes in that would warrant it, you know, if we're talking about someone coming in to do with a large commercial shopping centers, I think we would want, might as well take a look at those things. I have to look in the ordinance, I don't remember if we specifically call it, I know there was elements for shared parking and bank parking in there, but I don't think we specifically have any language for those type of, those connected type of parking lots.
So there's some kind of bulldoze next to Dollar General at this point. Could we have a way to tie that next development and to, you know, to keep those?
A lot of cases, I mean, what I've seen is, you know, there are use agreements, you've got...
It's double case by case, Chris.
Yeah, it depends on the company coming in, some people are open to it, some people want their access and their curb cut.
Yeah, that's what, on page two, item 14, that strictly says every parcel has to contain its own parking, which is the norm. Now for shared parking, it's encouraged when you have multiple engines on crash, for safety issues, you know, one of these, all these driveways, so you have one shared and the two owners share the maintenance side. However, once you approve that, it runs with the property forever.
Plus you have pedestrians stopping at every driveway to get from one end to another. And I'll, just only on my own, I'll pull into a fast food place and I'll go, "Yeah, I'm not standing in this line." And I can luckily drive through the curb cuts that are in the back and go to the next one and go, "Nope, they're crazy, two." And I can get three down and get in there and eat and get out of the joint without going back in and out to find out how insane.
It's always encouraged on a, on a street, and high-screamed streets, of course, they're all here connected from the back or have one shared entrance, you branch out. But again, maintenance, and sometimes you don't get good neighbors, then you have a bigger issue. So you don't want to dictate one way or the other, but in experience, if they come up with that, you can suggest it, and if they come up with that, it's fine, as long as they understand that they have to live with this through the entire type of facility. Sometimes they have multiple ones for one parcel.
If it's something we want to explore, Clint Township did a really good job of it on Garfield. In fact, Steve played a lot of that stuff on, on Garfield.
Specifically, I'm talking about.
Garfield and 19 mile road, I mean, that's where you see it probably best deployed in McComb County, I think, where they had a little bit of insight and did that. You have the pro, I think it was the pro parking lot on one side, both sides of the road there.
Yeah.
Those connected. We always use that as an example, we're going to do it right, this is kind of the way to do it.
And that's where I'm taking my personal approach.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything to make parking lots safer makes sense. People do not in and out the main road, of course. Actually, this body does, you know, every time you see a site, you would suggest that.
Any other questions on what's this?
Questions for the engineering, I just want to just open up, just, let's just ask if there's any general ideas you guys have about parking, if there's areas you know about work, things that you've seen, like, you know, you just indicated the shared access roads is something that you know is not, it seems to work. If there's other ideas you guys have or something in particular that you want us to take a look at, we'd be more happy to do that.
You know, I don't know how broadly you discuss it, but I would like us to look at how to park in a sense of angled parking. Like right now, everybody's parallel parking, square people all over, there's these basically in the village. You know, and I think that street pavement is wide enough to maybe take a look, it's got soft shoulders on each side that could probably absorb a little bit if we eliminate the soft shoulder on that side, but some angled parking, just to have the ability to pull more people there. It is the only place where we're basically at right now.
We could definitely look at that, I believe the board and President Dilver asked me to look at that specifically on Main Street, and then we came up with a layout that adds 11 parking spots on Main Street on both sides.
Yeah, it would be nice on both sides of the park, so probably is that the area you were looking at?
Yes. On pavement, we didn't look at that at all, because it's not paved all the way, it has a gravel shoulder, so we need to improve it a little bit. I mean, striping is not going to...
Right, no, it would have to.
So we didn't look at that side, but we did look at Main Street, and we added 11 spots on one side, and believe that plan to do another 11 on the subside. So that'll give you 22 spots right there. We did approve a contractor, but they're delayed in their schedule because of the weather. You'll see striping very, very soon.
Would maintenance of striping be included in this as well as, you know, letting it disappear? And then we've got, you know, the enforcement of, hey, put some lines on the ground again. I mean, a good example of that is with the new village marketplaces. The whole parking lot needs to be paved, lines are non-existent.
I think I can address that. Generally, the maintenance and that on-street parking was what Jen's talking about, is generally not covered by the zoning ordinance. That would be something that's up to the village to determine how they want to lay that out. There is another parking ordinance that's outside of the zoning ordinance that stands alone in the village, and it was something I wanted to just do explore more, to see if it's still in actually an effect. It was passed in 74, and it basically says that if you have a parking lot, you have to register it with the city every year, and DPW is supposed to go out and check it for just those things. Is it breaking up, is the concrete need to be patched, and there's supposed to be, there is a workflow to manage that. I don't know if that's taking place, I just saw that the other day looking through, basically just Google, I just, I did a Google search, but I searched through the ordinance just on parking, and came up with a whole other section that's outside of zoning. As we're looking to see, there's things in the zoning ordinance, but there are little bits that are outside of the zoning ordinance covered in other sections, and some, let's see that with some of the science stuff that we're presenting to you guys.
Yeah, we're not familiar with that.
Yeah, I was not familiar, and seeing that was from 1975, I hadn't doubt anybody's got a list and doing it, but there is a mechanism that the village has identified for doing just that.
I lost my car in there once with the whole checker.
Yeah. If that ordinance is still in existence, we need to get Chris on that, I guess.
They did fix that spot, but I mean, that hole was literally five feet by five feet in the parking lot over there, and you drive in at night, pull next to the store, and there went my car and a tire.
And normally, can we tape these?
Yep.
I'll be very delicate. Normally, the maintenance of the private property is the private property owner, and this body approves a site plan with some standards in it, and that includes striping and parking. Now that should remain in effect for the development to be functioning. As far as maintenance, I mean, yeah, the DPW goes out on the public parking lots and the streets, you own your own streets, and those are handled and assessed by your DPW. As far as the private property, you have to be careful how you board that and structure it.
So we have to define who enforces the upkeep of.
And then if you, something happens and there's a wrong assessment, what happens? Because once you put the village name on some communication, you own it, that's it.
In addition, we cannot expect everyone else to hold by a standard that we are not willing to hold ourselves by on the property that we are to be maintaining as well. So you have to be a little bit careful about that. I follow what you're saying.
Or simply liability, basically.
Liability and being...
That's what neighbor. Right, yeah. So in other words, if this parking lot here was in disarray, it would not be appropriate for us to say, "You've got a fixed parking lot," like we have to, kind of have to walk and talk a little bit.
Well, I agree with that, because the parking lot went way, way too long of the shape that was in to, I mean, a shame on us.
No, there aren't a law enforcement parking standards, you know, somebody who's not parking in the right spot, handicapped spot, they can issue tickets. And if you don't see the lines, what are you parking? So there are mechanisms to do it, but you have to be careful how you get involved with that.
Yeah, I hope we hold ourselves up to higher standards than we have in the past.
Absolutely.
And then setting these standards, I guess, piggybacking on that is, this is great, but at the same time, we also, I, you know, my homework, I found a lot of standards in here that are not being followed right now. So we can do all, I guess, I can speak and tell all my teammates, we can do all the work that we want with this case, but we have to have, know that we have support that is going to be followed, and there are no great people that are going to be taking the measures.
Right, and that becomes the...
I don't want to sound negative, say before.
But that's exactly what, that becomes the enforcement component of it. And I think that once we take these changes to it, we will talk to, we will want to talk to legal council, and also talk to village council to see, do we want to accept these things, we want to enforce, you know, depending on what types of changes that we recommend. In reference to, it's chapter 378 in the ECO, and it's called Parking Areas Off-Street. It was adopted in 1974, and it talks about evaluating, permitting, inspecting, and violations and penalties.
378.
378, chapter. That may be something we want to do a deeper dive on and see if that's something that we still want to reinforce, if it is being enforced, because this would be something that we could make a recommendation potentially to council to say, "We think you should just strike this off together, what these are the..." We don't, we could recommend changes, or we could just say to them, "We think you should talk to legal council about this, because technically it's, this is their, it's outside of the zoning ordinance." We can make some modifications, but they have a little issue with it, they have to determine if that's the way they want to continue to operate. Because again, this is going to fall into that enforcement component. If we're saying we have a site evaluation and a permit's supposed to be done, we're supposed to be doing an annual inspection, if we're not, we certainly can't go out there and say anything to someone over there, what they're doing on their private lot, unless it's created, we imagine, a public safety hazard. If you've got a chuckle that's eating cars in front of your, you know, place, we'll Any other parking questions or comments or things we should tend to address?
No, I only read it once myself, so...
Once doesn't know, I mean, it's a lot of numbers. If you're not familiar with this stuff, it's a lot to run your head around. But we'll try to, we will take collectively all of our comments in that, take a look at this, we'll present this to Chris, this is chapter 370, see what they want to do with that, and we'll come back next month and give you guys an update where we're at with this.
Signs discussion.
All right, so signs, signs are huge, and we're already an hour in, so we're definitely not going to get through, we're not going to solve all the sign problems in the village tonight, but what I wanted to do is, the sign section basically covers the definitions of the different types of signs. If you guys have read through it, you'll see definitions, the place that signs can be, the time that a sign can be displayed, the manner in which it can be displayed. We can regulate all of those things, the only thing we can't regulate is the message on the sign. And that's something that we will be adding to the new language, specifically stating that, because that, there's a big Supreme Court case that came down related to signage. You can regulate anything about it, but you can't necessarily say, you can't tell them what the message is, but whatever. But with that said, we don't expect you guys to dig into this and become an expert on signs, there's a number of things that we've experienced working with other communities that have some recommended changes that we're going to make here. But what I did want to do is just kind of, what will help us to put together a more comprehensive sign ordinance, I think, is just to try and just work with a list of questions that I think I sent around to you guys, and just kind of get you guys to put out things.
Fast, for question?
Sure.
Did you determine that sign ordinance that I sent you, where the standing was on?
No, that's the other thing, and I thank you for bringing that up, because I was trying to just to get that with the ordinance today. From what I can understand, from what I understand, there are...
My understanding is it was...
Repealed?
No, it was...
Okay. We have a sign ordinance, and the sign ordinance is in the code of ordinances outside of the zoning ordinance, it's its own separate ordinance. We're taking a look at that ordinance. That ordinance was passed under the new plan, or the old plan in 2010, under PAT, and that is the text that appears in section, I don't have the section over here, but it's in, it's in the Unicode, I think it's like section two or something, it says it has its own section, so signs.
Yeah, I haven't, and that's what I was comparing to.
But then I was told that in 2011, there was an amendment that was proposed, and we're trying to run this down. The amendment was on the administration of the signs. It was, the amendment was giving more latitude to the building administrator or the building folks to just, to do sign approvals without having to send them back to you guys, unless the sign was being included in a master site plan for grand new development. So someone had an existing business, wanted to change their sign, they were given administrative there. We have not found any documentation that states that that was actually passed by council and put into the ordinance. That's the least. The weird thing that we've encountered is that within the zoning ordinance, there is a section that covers signs as well, and that is in direct conflict with what we have in the other one. We don't see any language or any action in the past that said in 2010, here's our new sign ordinance, and we're going to repeal what's in the zoning ordinance. So where we're at tonight is, what we're talking about is the zoning ordinance that was passed in 2010, which we definitely know that the village took action on. But we're still going to try to run down and figure out what this element in the zoning ordinance is and why it's still in there.
And this isn't off of that zoning ordinance, this is off... And this isn't off of that zoning ordinance, this is off, or this is off the zoning ordinance, not off the ordinance.
What you have, chapter four, twenty-five, signs, this is the standalone ordinance, this is what was passed in twenty ten. This is not the piece that's in the zoning ordinance.
What you emailed to us was chapter fifteen.
Did I send that one as well to you guys?
That's all, that's all you still have.
Oh, I apologize, I sent you chapter fifteen. Yes, chapter five, fifteen is the one that we think is, should have been revoked, it does not, is not valid. Chapter four, twenty-five is the section on signs that we believe is valid.
And did you ship us four, twenty-five?
I thought I did.
Apparently.
Apparently I did.
I got it.
I apologize. But for, for, for purposes of tonight, I don't, we don't have to dive into this really deeply. We were just kind of, wanted to get some general idea of what you guys felt about signs in the community. These are some questions that we've used in other communities, we guided recently through the sign exercise. The first question that we have, I think we kind of already know the answer, this was the planning side, what's the greatest challenge that we have in enforcing signs, in regulating signs? I think that's basically just enforcement. A lot of people are just making changes to their business, and we're not following through with getting the sign permit and making sure that they're putting something up that meets the standards, be it a wall sign, a monument sign on the ground, or a island sign. It's most likely the wall signs, I think, that we have the largest issue with, but that's just speaking from what I've heard from Lori in the building department. And through years that we've been here providing planning services, I don't think we've had a single sign come before us. We're still waiting for Dollar General, they were going to do that at the end of the process. So that would be the first sign that we review under, what we hope to determine which one of the four hundred section.
What about that painted sign advertising the Ford dealership that's on the side of the road?
That's, that's another question that we have, that we'll ask you tonight. Do we, do we want to have painted signs in the village?
Is that, I believe that's covered in four, twenty-five.
It may be covered in four, twenty-five.
Yeah, I believe a lot of, like, a lot of, it, it's very strict. As a matter of fact, it was so strict, we got backlash on it, because it was not exactly accommodating businesses. Technically, all the flags would come down. Any sign that's on the corner attached to a pole had to come down. Anything that wasn't that type of sign, like the, the gas station, they have way too many signs up. The lights over at the smoke shop, whatever that's called now, they should, they can't be that neon. So all of those things are in that new.
Are being addressed in.
Are, are all addressed in there. So, you know, I don't know if that's a good one, I don't, personally, I don't think there's a lot of change that need to be made unless the rules have been changed a lot.
I don't think that there are, I think it just, it really just kind of depends upon what the feel of the community is today. When I asked the question about wall, of the painted signs, you've given an example if there's one in the community. Now, the question is, we can, we can cite another community where we have one, where the community absolutely hates it because it's not being maintained, but since they don't have anything, they did not have anything regulating of, they had no teeth to do anything about it. What they've basically done in this community is they've decided they do not want to have any wall signs or murals, so they're prohibiting them. So he becomes a nonconformant use, and eventually, they hope that that wall gets painted over.
But the sign you're talking about, the red is basically an advertisement, it has nothing to do with the business that's even there, right? Is that the one I'm thinking of?
It's promoting another business, and they keep it well maintained.
But it's not a business, it's an advertisement.
It's, it's an off, it's considered an off-prem, we consider off-premise sign. So it's, it's advertising for another business that's not on sight, similar like a building ordinance.
I do have four, twenty-five up on my screen, and prohibited signs are cloth signs, balloon signs, or displays, streamers, windblown devices, spinners, portable signs, trailer signs, and pennants. Number two, no flashing, animated, moving, or bare-balled type style signs. Number three, signs affixed to or painted on street furniture. Number four, banner signs, window signs, A-frame signs, or any other sign not specifically authorized herein. Number five, signs painted directly onto wall surfaces.
That's it, right?
That would be that one. Six, vehicle business signs and trailer signs. Would that mean like signs that are like box truck signs?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be the guy who owns the truck that parks in front of his businesses every day.
You know, he did a lot, you know, we did a lot of enforcement on that prior to our new code enforcement, is they cut, uh.
Do you apologize?
He did a lot of code enforcement on the signs. He went down on Gresham and cut down all the, you know, but he, he let them know, and that has, that ordinance has been used while Dave was doing those, those things.
Okay, that's good to know.
What about those lawn signs, people sticking them inside the road?
They, those are not allowed, only during political season, and they're only allowed for like X many days before, and they have to be like, like the sign that we had down here was not compliant, the half across from front apartment.
The Big Trump sign?
Yeah, that's the one. So that was, you know, that could be taken down at any time.
So the medical marijuana signs, that's one.
Those come on, come down.
Okay.
None of those are allowed, and another one are the, that's, Carter's took it down, but what used to be.
Yeah, portable sign.
Portable signs are not allowed either.
Yeah, so I didn't see.
So the A-frames, or the ones on wheels, the, the lights, and the change of the text.
Yeah, they're all, but it's pretty strict, there's, you know, if anything, like I said, I think we got a lot of pushback on it from some people on council at the time, because they felt it was too stringent. Have there been grandfathered in, grandfathered status? Anything that was here prior to that ordinance coming in was allowed to stay. It wasn't, it was just basically going forward with the, the standard. So, I mean, some simple things, like the head, and all those sorts of things, that, you know, we didn't go around making people who had signs that were too big or too small.
The temporary stuff was enforced.
The temporary stuff was all enforced, especially on Gresham.
The twenty-seven Gresham Plaza, a lot of the business owners are completely just unaware of even what the ordinances are. I made that post on, on Facebook, basically calling out all the businesses, saying that we're going to get code enforcement involved, because twenty-seven Gresham was getting really bad, couldn't even see to make a left or a right-hand turn, and within forty-eight hours, I think, most of the signs were actually removed just when they were given the ordinance and said, hey, you're a violation, and we're going to get code enforcement involved if you don't act.
I think that's a good thing businesses up there, they're trying to cooperate with the backlit signs, just lighting up the corner, that somebody's home.
A lot of the, yeah, it sounds like, I'm just looking through the list of questions here, and, and with the signs coming, with the two ordinances, I think it's by, it looks like you, you have addressed some of the things that are, that we want to touch on. Let me ask the question about what they call a human directional sign. What do you get, have you, I don't know if you touched on that? That'd be the Liberty Tax guy standing on the corner, waving fifty. Some communities, communities do regulate that, some have prohibited those. The biggest issue is, most of those people aren't in the right of way, so they're technically not, you can't stand there to do it. There can't be regulation. I don't know if you have that, if it's an issue, if it's something you want us to, to look at, because we have written that into a lot of ordinances, at the request of.
I don't think we have any other, any businesses who engage in it, but just because we don't own any businesses and don't engage in it, I, I still think it's worth looking into.
I think it's worth including, it should be.
What, what other communities have done, the ones that have not completely prohibited, have made, have made the human directional sign a temporary sign, and in some cases, they've allowed that to be permitted by, and a business can come and say, I want to do a temporary sign permit, and they can do it up to two times a year, or whatever interval you guys decide, and for whatever interval of time. Something happening at Grand Opening Sale, and we're at tax time, and they want to put someone out there, do you have, but you do have some control at least then, because then you can stay, but it needs to be on the business, it can't be in the right of.
On the sale.
So, it, it sounds to getting it, but I guess, if there's nothing in the ordinance, then there's no, you have, you know, nothing that you can do about it. If you do cite it, and make it a permanent temporary thing, something that could be just administratively handled at the building department, someone pays the permit can do that. We have communities where there are certain businesses who do certain events every year, and they know what their sales are, and they know when they want to put up temporary banners or different things, and they just kind of come at the beginning of the year, pay their fees, and take care of all the state right up front, so. If it's not an issue, we don't have to address it, just bring it up here. The other thing is, I don't know, we'll have to take a look through what you guys have in. Did you guys make any decisions on between monument signs and pole signs? I know a lot of our communities are getting away from the pylon sign, which would be the gas station real tall, and going to the more monument sign, which is the, you know, more of the brick rectangular, smaller profile sign.
Decorated.
Yeah, and generally, with, with most of them, it'll be key to some type of building components of the building. You know, you're seeing Chesterfield went to that lower sign, I just started to see the new McDonald's, and as, as signs are being replaced, they're being replaced with the lower monuments. Some people like them, and they say that they're, they're better, it's less obstructive, then some businesses say, I don't have enough visibility.
You have not enough room.
Yeah.
We don't have Chesterfield's.
Right, so, it depends. I, I don't know if that's something that you guys want to entertain. Because, and it doesn't have to be in all districts either, I mean, but so you might want to say, we're just looking for monument signs on, you know, on the Gresham corridor. I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what you guys ultimately do.
I think we have. I don't know what you guys ultimately do. I mean, do you. Hence, you know, if you look at twenty-seven Gresham, you're both monument signs, McDonald's, I, I think we moved to a monument.
It does mention monument signs.
Didn't we?
And four, twenty-five mentions it.
But I think it also mentions a maximum height for a pylon too, so, so I think that they're, they're allowed as well, up to twenty-two feet tall for pylon signs. So, if, if we like them, if you already had that discussion and decided, we can keep all the red. If it's something that you want to change, we can change it, we can change it in a specific district.
Now we got all that junk that was on the corner.
And I think, and what you have to think about is that, we can't force someone to change what they exist, have existing, unless it's in the right of way, it's a hazard or something. But as, or it's not maintained, correct. Or as the sign deteriorates, needs to be replaced, they will need to replace it at the new standard. So, something to think about.
While we're on the subject of signs, I wonder if we could ask the DPW if they could go through and pull all the signs out of the right of way that are there. There's a ton of twenty-six Gresham, there's a ton of twenty-seven Gresham. There's great businesses, and then just stick them there. You know, they're all, they're all over the place.
You don't lose them all.
Yeah, and lots of, yeah.
Oh, that's the temporary ones.
Yeah, they're in the right of way, there's, there's probably twenty of them at twenty-six Gresham.
Oh, there's a ton of twenty-seven Gresham, too.
You ticketed every one of them.
Well, yeah, hopefully you start, if we start.
Totally disappear.
Well, a lot of them are probably going to be like all county, right, with that.
A lot of them will be in the, yeah, either in, I doubt, in the counties right of way.
Right, but the ones that fall in New Haven, I do believe there's something that we can do on.
Oh, if it's in the right hand, you definitely have the right of.
This is L D. More strict than what we are.
As far as signs, anything in the right of way, I mean, they, they'd like to have it removed, but I don't know. I don't think they actively pull them out.
Just that they care.
I've never seen them.
Pull them out, just, if they're missing enough, then they'll find someplace else to stick.
I pull mine out of your sort of.
They come back and they're missed.
For personal effects, I just put the sign up over and over and over again for my daycare at the New Haven ramp, going on to New Haven Road from ninety-four. Then Chesterfield had a sign cleanup day. All the courtrooms, the whole joint was full of people that got tickets for signs. The whole place was a sign cleanup day. And that was the first I learned with my hundred and seventy-five dollar fine, that, you know, after the twenty-fifth sign I put up there, you know, which I just assumed someone grabbed.
Right.
That's where I learned to look at the dang word, because it cost me some money.
Even for political signs to me, a permit.
Yeah.
That's what the new ordinance says? Yeah. Okay. Because I don't believe that's. The old one did not require a permit. No, he actually had.
So that's kind of funny, because we've had a lot of elections since twenty-ten, but, so we should really look at that in ordinance.
Maybe, maybe that's what we should do. Let me, let me get a copy of four, twenty, the right one to you guys, and maybe we'll take, just pick this up next month and look at them. We'll go through and make what recommended changes we have, we'll look at some of the technical details of the sign setbacks, and some of the sizes and stuff, and we can present that.
And under the broad category of signs.
Yes.
I have two, let me call, community sign issues, where I've been approached by members in the community on these two topics. And let me start with, the first one is the number of missing street signs, where people are breaking them off or something, and you, you got the bit hole and there's no street sign. Who does that? Who, who fixes that? DPW? I mean, do we do it?
Not this committee.
Wait a minute.
DPW would.
Wait a minute, but somebody has to say something, you know?
Absolutely.
I mean, we're not so, we're not so pigeonholed, we're because I'm here, I can't go DPW, I just wanted to know, who handled, who, can we just refer that to council? And, and they.
I don't even think you'd have to refer it to council, I think you'd just bring it up to DPW directly.
Thank you, thank you. And the other one, I was approached by members of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, and they were inquiring a street name change. Can we change, how do you go about changing the name of a street from Elk Street to John Mack Avenue? How do you do that? We did, we did that for a franchise, but I don't remember what happened, it's too long.
We look like you know.
Yeah, you know, sometimes you see the two names.
Yes, yeah.
You know, in the city, they'll, it'll be.
Like an honorary.
Right, correct. He's got the.
It's not easy. I gotta start with that. You own your own streets, so you, that's, that's a given, that's how you control these streets, but if it's part of a platted subdivision, it's already platted with that name, so you have to get permission from the state. Number one. Then you have to involve fire, EMS, and post office, for a street name change. And to add to that, the resident.
Post office, and what was the first one you said?
The fire department, EMS, and post office.
Oh, so they know where you are.
Yeah.
It's got a new address.
For emergency.
Okay. Yeah, we're talking Delaney or Elk.
Yeah.
So in the, in the case.
Do you have any.
Of new subs coming?
Right.
I live on a street called Wingham, the stupidest, you know, street I can remember. You know, I'm sure there's many people's heads that are up there, people that have done things in this community that they could have named that street within our new subdivision after anybody.
It's usually irrelevant. Elk is where he lives, lived.
Oh, that's rough.
And then Delaney is the street that his church is on, and he built it.
I was just thinking, the next time we get the opportunity to look at a site plan and say, hey, this is going to be Mack Avenue, this is going to be somebody, yeah, well, not, it's on Google Ball.
If it's a private street, and it's very serviceable, one, resident, or two.
What about the honorary thing? Is that, would we have to go through all those?
Yeah.
Do the same thing?
Secrecy.
Oh. I thought you'd have to be a simple.
That was even.
But who would do it in the high idea? We wouldn't do it, we could recommend it, right?
Actually, the president of that street, they made a petition to council, and then council started to.
Consider that.
But they will be liable for all costs.
That's a loser.
Whoever makes the petition.
Could a business do that?
Yes.
Celebrating hope with people.
Of course. We've seen them happen before, but they create more problems than good.
What creates more problems?
Changing the street.
We've done it two or three times here, but none of the people who did it are alive. So I say we should have a couple of planning.
We're still trying to fix what happened, we're still trying to fix branch out.
That's what's on.
It's still messed up.
Well, that goes to even having an address on, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's, the attorneys are still looking at the property separately for that, so it's, it's lingering out there.
If it's within a recommendation, a recommendation jurisdiction, or in that, it's all liable for the game.
You know, if I may make a suggestion, and maybe just take this back, because if one thing that we can do is not naming the street, however, Fountain Park remains unnamed. Perhaps we look at, you know, John Mack Park as opposed to a street.
You know what? I would take that back to them, because originally they mentioned Main Street, I mean, I knew that was not the...
You know. Might be too much, if, I mean, that would be as not as a finger, that's enough for us to resurrect the sign and name that park, because it has not been named.
So they would go to council with the petition?
Nobody would have to for the change of a park, it would just have to be presented, and...
It's not a great...
Yeah, it's just basically a name of a park, yeah, we would just change the name of the park.
They would still go to council though.
Yeah, we still have to go to council, yeah.
So they should, they should just go into Fountain Park or...
Yeah.
Yeah, just go to a meeting.
Stick Fountain.
Have a couple of people go and do the presentation.
Yeah, because Haven Place, they had requested that the park across the street from that, the old Haven Place Park.
Yeah, that's what, we did the same thing with them, yeah.
Yeah, so they just went to, they went before the council and requested it.
But that did have a name, didn't it?
No. The corner.
The old bank. The old bank.
It just, you know, the street gets on it.
I think they came to Park District Rep Committee, correct?
They were approached and dropped the park.
Yep.
When we talked about changing it into a garden, there was a, there was a name attached to that park, and I don't remember what it was. Obviously, it's dead, but there was a name on that.
Garden.
I know that in the, I know that in the Park's...
Somebody drove over and remembered that.
It was Triangle Park, just, because it's, you saw Triangle Park, that's what we just, we didn't know it.
Yeah.
But it was in the Parks' record.
But, yeah, that's nice.
That's perfect.
I said I actually just got Google Maps to write it, because the park is spelled...
And I would still recommend Fountain Park.
That's all I would love.
Stone is named.
As far as Google is concerned, it's Fountain Park.
Maybe John Elk.
John Elk Fountain Park.
So, if they did want, you're saying that if they did want, this is something new to me, if they do want to change that, they would need to go to the state, the platform?
If it's planted.
Because they are planted, one's a successor's plant, and one's a replanted, so, yeah.
It has to be replanted with a new name.
With a new name, okay.
And not to complicate it even further, Google and everybody who knows all these maps, GPS, phones, everything need to be updated. And if Tanta or whoever, Delano, doing a map update, they have to recognize that change before all these maps that we have recognize that as, the new address. So now people living there, they give their address to somebody, they can't find it, because that street does not exist in any map in the world. So they have to wait for all these maps to get updated.
Thankfully, Google Maps gives you, gives you the opportunity to make those changes, like our registered user cans. So I actually spent two hours updating every single street address within the core park, because you put in a street address, it would just give you the middle of the street.
Or the middle of the park.
Yeah, or the middle of the park, so I went through and entered every single address and made sure it was pointed up, the street view was pointed at the right house, and it's a lot of work.
The street in the north used to be called something else on the original submission, not Arlington. And I forget the name of the original street, but it took like seven years for everybody to catch up with.
Yeah, it did me some wrongs.
When they actually built the house there, that when they built that guy's house, the street kind of started showing up under Google as Arlington Street. But it was something else before that, do you remember, Kyle?
Nope, I don't think it was Arlington, I think it's the one behind Fairburg Vinecon. That's not really...
I have no idea what that street is.
Or Nicole.
Still, I think it was also...
To go forward, I can research it a little further.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to them, I don't...
The problem is...
I don't wanna drag this out, you know, put them in a situation where they have to do a lot of work to get this done.
Unfortunately, Jeff just checked that, it's a plant, so that complicated thing is right from the get-go.
The park would be so much speedier too, I think, and that would, they would feel good about it happening sooner than later.
And it's, it's, at Main Street. It'll be seen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
You know, does anybody else have any questions for, for Jeff, or anything about this? Okay, can I put in a kickback as a discussion?
Did you mind, set the calendar?
The calendar. But there's definitely days, because July 3rd is, I mean, I'm not gonna be here, I don't bother anybody else, but I'm getting a five-day weekend, Rob's traveling.
Well, the first one is actually January 2nd.
Yeah.
So do you want the day after New Year's Eve?
I mean, I don't know, is anybody planning to...
I don't want to trust my judgment.
The week after.
And not only just for us, when I think of these dates, I think, you know, we want someone to come to a meeting, and we have a meeting while they're on holiday, and then they gotta wait a whole nother month because we are putting a meeting on a holiday, or within a holiday weekend.
The 3rd? Um, just to make sure that Greg is home?
Do we just change that, change the, oh, just change it one day, to the 3rd?
So we're looking at January, Wednesday, January 3rd, then?
Right.
Are there any...
Well, I'm just looking, I've got them on here, February 6th would be the next one.
That's good.
March 6th, April 3rd, May 1st, June 5th, and then potentially July 3rd.
We just move that over one day to Monday then?
The following week.
6/5, and then July?
We can tell.
6/5, July 3rd is, would be the next first Tuesday.
So Sunday's the 1st, the 2nd, the 3rd, the 4th is Wednesday's the holiday.
Then maybe to the next week, wouldn't that be the advisory council?
When you're running...
The town would be...
On the 10th.
The 10th is the council meeting.
Right.
Or on the 9th, have the day before council on Monday.
9th, do we know?
Let's just do the next day, I mean, if people are not partying that far, when is it like?
Well, the next day would be the 4th, so...
A lot of people...
The day before the 4th, right?
A lot of people take that weekend like a whole...
What about Monday?
The 9th, or the Monday before.
Monday the 2nd.
Not, well, you can do what you want, I won't be...
You're right. I won't be here either.
And I can't commit to the Monday, I mean, I won't know for a while, once we set our calendar, what day we're gonna follow up.
I don't have a Friday, 3, 4.
We just go July 9th then?
Why don't we do this, why don't we set it up tentatively for the 9th? And, you know, we may not need that meeting.
You never know.
You know.
That's true.
And we'll, so we'll put it on the schedule, July 9th.
So we're not with July 9th.
If we don't need it, we'll leave that in the air to possibly push stuff off, because we do go really slow in there.
Tempt us a little out in the summer.
Yeah.
August 7th is the next date, then you're at September 4th.
It's the day after Labor Day.
Which is the day after Labor Day.
Yeah, probably should be.
So first day is low.
Yeah, and then October 2nd, November 6th, which is Tuesday, and then...
New Year's Eve, I'm sure.
Then December 4th.
Yeah, that was, that was when I looked at too, I thought we should change to January 2019, do it now.
Oh, okay.
Because it's the holiday.
Do we go to Wednesday the 2nd, or do we go to the 8th?
Well, the 8th is a council.
Council, you have to go to the 7th. January 7th.
Monday the 7th, okay.
I just made my first grant in 2019.
Wow.
If there's any emergencies... If there's any emergencies, we could, we'll try to get one. You know, people flying out here to build, guys are getting... You gotta tell me.
We'll make it happen.
Hey, once they see this marker profile, we fly them.
Uh, anything else?
No, I was just, I was just gonna say, just to follow up where we're left with the signs, for next steps, I will distribute the, what we believe is the most current and updated ordinance, take a look at those items, we will go through it in depth in terms of the setbacks and those types of things. We'll bring any recommendations we feel that should come to you guys on that. And we will try to also talk to Chris about, figure out what's up with that other section of the parking ordinance, and then also figure out what, if we should have, if, if the section in the planning, right, in the zoning ordinance, chapter 515, was repealed for signs, because we've got two conflicting ordinances on there. The only other question I had, and maybe you guys have some history, is I don't know when we went to Ecode as a service online of putting our ordinances out there, but we're finding that there seems to be this period of time, like, three or four years ago, that it looks like things did not get updated out there. Because what's out there presently isn't necessarily what was adopted. Because it's, one of the sections is in the pawn and the adult entertainment sections.
Oh, yeah, I sent that to you.
There was a section that was changed, we saw that that had been approved, but the language doesn't appear in Ecode.
I think it was 2013.
Was that 2013 that took place? So, I don't know if that's the clerk's, whose responsibility it was to update those, but we definitely want to try to get everything that we have forward-facing to the public out through the most current ordinance. And also that we collectively want that were enforced in the right thing, because I wasn't even aware of those changes until you had sent those to me.
So what, the liaison will refer that?
I will, I will talk to Lori, I will try to follow up on that with the clerk and with Lori and find out what happens. But I didn't know if you guys know who, when we did Ecode, or was there any...
Information has a voice at the table, so that when you hit that line, I would like the liaison involved in that, because he will be doing the presentation.
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 Okay.
It was over two years, 2010.
Yeah, and I know there's, there's some ordinances which, you go back into Violet Cab, there's the folder for it, but there's nothing in that thing. So that's some of the challenges that we've had.
That's cool.
So I mean, we're slowly collecting, getting our house in order, and we just, there's a couple of those things we need to, at least on the planning side, to be able to pin it, pin down.
Yeah, just, I just, just a comment to Joe, I read this, 375 ordinance, 78. And it is very old, and it does go into engineering standards for the parking lot, so I would like to get involved with that.
Absolutely.
If you can look at it. And it does call for police, fire, and DPW to look at those parking violations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I see, like, I don't know, it seems like we as a body, we should come up with a plan as a whole, because we're covering marketing, changing ordinances, doing multiple type things that really isn't in a step of, we should be powering out the zoning and get it finished and done and in place before, you know, we bring somebody here to say, "Hey, build something here." And in the same respect, code enforcement, like, bringing out the guy from all these and driving around to some of these places, and then they're going, and without attacking particular homes, and I'm sure you all know what homes I'm talking about, you drive by and you go, "Oh, my God, you know, what is going on here?" And you're inviting them to come see, and we're driving them around, and we're not enforcing those portions that are disgusting. And I will say disgusting, because I, there's some spots...
I wouldn't take them to no place disgusting. I sell for a living.
All right, so I'm taking that seriously. But some of them are hard, like, you can't take them by the beautiful, um, school building, and who wouldn't want to take them there? Because that, to me, was one of the most marvelous things I got done in this town, was how they did that, to bring it up to me. But then you look next door, and you're like, or on either side of it, and you're like, "What the heck is this?" Um, I mean, do we have a code enforcement officer yet?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
The code enforcement officer's been working on both of those problems.
I mean, does the man have an 800 number?
Yep, his number is posted on the village website.
You know, what might be helpful is to have Chris and the code enforcement person maybe come to, we could request they come to the new meeting and give you guys an update from their perspective of where they're at in the enforcement.
I heard that's what we've been...
Because I would like to hear it as well, because I was part of a couple meetings with the attorneys, and then they kind of go off on their own. And we've been charged with looking at the zoning, but let's hear what they have to say as well, I think that'll be helpful.
And I don't want to necessarily sit here on record and, you know, attack people's homes.
No, but no thanks.
It's just, you know, I want us to look our best, to draw our best, because you only get one first impression, and then...
Yeah, and I understand a certain criteria they're looking at too. And it's not necessarily the quality of somebody's house next door, as long as there are people in there, and they eat, and go to the store, that's what they want. But, you know, by the time we do this, I would have mapped out several communities, this is a older community, so you can see where people live. They're looking at population and potential for you to grow. You know, I love taking so pleasure to see all these half-constructed homes, which is a dissatisfying road, it's a beautiful thing. And I'm pretty pleased with, with where we're going, you know, and some of that stuff we already did in the master plan. But we put it on the shelf.
Right, well, we have the master, with the master plan, we did make changes to the zoning ordinance to affect the types of changes that we wanted there.
Really?
And we made those recommendations.
Yeah, we're listening.
So what we're, I think what we're doing with this, with this walk back through is, not only is it for enforcement, there's been a number of things that have come up, like, trying to cite industrial properties where we have, we're asking for a stream of frontage that's not necessarily available in the village. So there's some, there are some site parameters in terms of dimensions and setbacks that I think we definitely want to review and custom tailor down to the village. Because in a lot of cases, we won't knock whoever wrote the zoning ordinance, a lot of these is a copy from other communities. And reading through the zoning ordinance for the village, I feel it was borrowed from a much larger community than what we had, based upon some of the standard stuff we've seen, and some of the things that we've had to try to tackle working through site plans, and then have, in the end, have sent off to CP for, you know, for bus arrangements.
Well, I hear you. And in conclusion, I just want to say, one of the things I enjoyed about being on that mission with the master plan was that we were taking into consideration that Lehman had a reputation of being like a Gestapo state, you know, it's too difficult, it took too long to get in here. And if we're sent out to try to break in people, I'm not saying ignore the codes, but just let us be careful not to put up this arrogant wall like we had before, and we had nothing to brag about. Now we've got a little bit of something to brag about, but I just think we need to be careful. You made reference, you know, you guys did the effort, trying to keep the flexibility in there, so that you're not just, if you don't have exactly 9.5, you can't build. That, that's where we're wasting our time. You know, gotta be able to work with people and, and develop some trust, you know, which is where we were, you know, when we put this thing together. So I, you know, I just wanted to say that, that I'm not in favor of, you know, ever being like solid.
I think we want to, we want to be flexible, we want to be development friendly.
Yeah, because if you're, if you're debating over, you know, six feet in an apartment lot, and every time the person comes back, "No, no," you know, it takes too long, and they say, "Forget it, go to Richmond or go to the Baltimore." And that's what we're dealing with, because I will be in the streets trying to sell this. I don't know about anybody else, we don't have to do it, I choose to do it. And I just don't want to bring back something and then, "Here, it went wrong, I can't build it," that's all I'm saying.
I'm agreeing with you 100%. That's what I'm saying, I don't think all our ducks are in a row before us pushing the sale, and then exactly what you just said pops up.
Yeah.
And then it's, "Oh, wait for this, oh, no," and then they're like, already have moved somewhere else.
That's right, they don't call you back no more.
Because we don't, we didn't put everything in a nice lineup, you know, we didn't get all our stuff done.
I mean, as an example, look at Chesterfield. I mean, as an example, look at Chesterfield and IKEA. They have a sign in every corner that says, "Come here, we want you, you're welcome." I mean, if we really want Aldi here, we have to sell ourselves to Aldi, and, you know, I don't know.
I saw that for a sign, and I said, "What is happening there?"
They're not yet, but that's, Chesterfield's trying to make them feel like...
Oh, they're rah rah reed, okay.
So, you know, have a...
So, part of that trust is having some consistency too.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, I, I think that the community wants to know what to expect from us too. And if you give six feet to one person, then seven feet to the next guy.
That's right.
You know?
It has, there has to be a standard. I think with the, with the zoning, I mean, it gives you, it gives you a framework for setting, this is the character of what we're looking for in these areas. I think what we can build in is we can build and say, "These aren't the recommended non-parking spaces needed, but we have, we can administer, we have the administer, the ability to administratively vary that by, say, 5 or 6% to give that way, but everybody gets 5 or 6%." It has to be codified that everyone gets the same treatment, but we want to build flexibility. We can't just have a trailer, you don't have to plant those trees.
I was getting a little worried about where this conversation was going, and it was taking me back to...
No, I'm saying, set goals. We're gonna accomplish X amount of the zoning ordinance by this month, and this month, and this month. And we're gonna be at a certain place by the end of our first year together, that things are complete, and there isn't the hiccups going back, you know, that, that caused issues and bad taste. Because, you know, once you put yourself out there and then you gave them a rotten taste, and that rotten taste is just, you know, spreading like wildfire, you know, like, we're, we're out of saying from prior years. We should fix our house before we, you know, get people that haven't heard of our, the bad taste part. And then they get a bad taste. Have everything, is it maybe do that? Because it's all been pussy goosey for a long time.
Well, we have had opportunities that we could have maybe extended meetings, you know, take them as workshops that we come together, and we're gonna, we're gonna tackle a much larger stack. So, those are some things that we could do to move things along a little bit, prick around.
That's the kind of...
Right.
To reach goals, obtain them by that date, and move on to the next goal, and check it off the list.
Yeah, like remember, everyone's, uh, dangerous.
And if I'm not able to participate with the Aldi, you may also look at our number. We might be small, but we are a thorough fair. We're, we're kind of a bridge for people to get from point A to point B. So, it's not necessarily our community that's going to be supporting that, Aldi's, but, you know, communities to the north and the left, because down there to 94, they have, they come through New Haven.
Yeah, they know. They've already researched the whole area. And he had, he was looking from New Baltimore, New Haven, Rich. You know, and it would hurt my heart if it's as close as Rich. You know, but they got so much competition, that they were doing much better than being in our spot.
And we talked a couple months ago about what, and I have not, what is the master plan for Grashad Avenue? Is it a five-lane highway, like Chesterfield?
It is, what is, what does M.Don have planned for, for it at this point in time? Tell me what it is right now.
A 55 mile an hour speed zone. I would really like to see us addressed at becoming a boulevard at 35 miles an hour. For what we want, with the residential that's already here, the residential, the schools, and with my car is going at 55 miles an hour, guess how much of what on the side of the road I'm seeing?
Nothing.
When I'm driving 30 miles an hour, when I go through downtown Richmond, or I go through, um, in Marine City, and I'm at a speed that I can actually see the businesses that are on my left and my right, "Oh, shoot, I gotta pull in there." But at 55 miles an hour on a five-lane highway, you're not seeing what? The guy who's gonna invest $25 million in a place. Me, Jesus.
Makes sense.
35 mile an hour zone, I would go out of my way to avoid even driving down.
But you really can't avoid going to here to get to Richmond, or going here to go to...
I'd be forced from the park.
And especially if it becomes your shopping center. Because those are the places you're gonna drive to just to get to those, because they're gonna become part of your regular business routine. You're gonna stop at the Aldi. You're gonna stop at whatever boutique stores that are running up and down that road. Because that's what you, they're on your route home. Just like Tracy said, we're not really per se big, but we're a nice crossfare of traffic. And it kills the carton of trucks. Punting through, Grashad Avenue.
I think that's something we should look at. We should look at diverting those trucking communities.
They won't come. They'll, they'll get off of Richmond and come south.
Richmond's stopping, I haven't seen.
I'm not sure.
I, they're definitely working on it.
I'm, I'm not sure.
It fell apart when what's-his-face kicked it up.
Yeah, again, you're, in that case, you're dealing, you're dealing with M.Don, you're gonna have some...
I was pushing him in the lane.
With those, those issues, elements.
But it, it would, it causes a, it's safer for the people that live here. You're talking all Pembroke, should have a nice walkway to that high school. This whole place, when you, when you think you're coming to live here, is walkable. And I don't know how that's addressed in the master plan either. Um, with trails and a biking community, because that's where people want to go live. It's where they can ride their bikes, and they can ride their bike across Grashad safely. I could let my kid get to the market, but I don't let him go up to the market. Because I'm not letting him cross Grashad 27 if my life depended on it. I would cross there.
I don't like it in the car.
Yeah.
I can't stand it. Sometimes I go all the way around.
I would really like to see us look at creating the pretty boulevard of New Haven. Because this is where our shopping center is, and they go, "Wow, this is beautiful." And that's what attracts people to shopping in some places. Some places, it's beautiful and nice and...
For the one mile.
You know, it's, it's a mile that's gonna get, it's gonna get slow. But hopefully, it's gonna get slow. We get, everybody's pulling in to take care of those errands on the way home. Pick up their groceries, grab food, their takeout, whatever it may be that they do in that, that space. So, just drive them through it. Because we have to differentiate ourselves from the mile below us in Chesterfield, and the mile above us in Lenox. Which are all gonna be the same thing. We have to be different in the village section, you know, just like if you're going anywhere that is a destination shopping place. You differentiate yourself from the space north and south of you, and they're back going, "Oh, well, there is this space just south of them, but I don't want to be there. I want to be up where the action is." You know? That's what I think New Haven needs, that look of a, a lit boulevard going down the street, and... Because there's no reason not to put your business in Chesterfield south of here. If you're offering the same thing here that they got there. You know, I'm trying to find a way to make us different, is what I'm trying to say. And it was one of the things, and, because we had talked about it, because I had served on a committee, um, for Grashad Access, and that's what the push, that I, the plan, in fact, I did see it, it's at my house. You know, my final plan that I had seen was to put that type of avenue that... Because just like going to Richmond, as soon as you hit Richmond, that, that speed drops right down to 35. And where are the businesses that are located in Richmond located? Beyond that sign. Because that's where their business is seen. They're not located south of it. They're located where their businesses... And that goes into a formula, if you ask a developer, what the miles per hour on, on a, on a street that your business is getting located on? That's a factor. So, open my future thoughts on, um, making a place more attractive and differentiating ourselves from others, so...
General communication.
I just want to, um, just a couple things. I think we are all pretty good here as far as working for a thing, but I think we need to share more. Just on a sense, a lot of people, and take this, lucky. A lot of people didn't know you were working on Aldi, and other people were working on it, and they didn't know. So, I feel like when we are approaching...
I don't think they were working on Aldi?
Yeah. So, with that...
Where'd they get it from?
Well, they were directed to, well, I'm just gonna...
Because I was talking about it.
Because I was talking about it.
And Chris directed him to do it.
Yeah, we came, we came to the last meeting, um, and I was, I was gonna bring it up, and I was gonna look into it, and then I saw on the agenda, and I was like, "Oh, okay, good, someone's really looking into it."
But you knew about it.
I didn't know you were looking into it.
I, I just think this, like, just take this from it. We can't be knocking on the same doors because we love to organize. So, if you're knocking on the Aldi door, just throw out an email, "Hey, I'm knocking on the Aldi door." And you're taking care of it now. You know, if you're knocking on the Kroger store, then you're knocking on Kroger's door. So, we're not all knocking on the same doors. And then, um, you know, that, you know, the emails too. I mean, like, see that communication before meetings. And our packages are weak. You know, if we're getting stuff here, it should be in our packages. So that we can be prepared and organized coming here and not having to read. That takes a lot of time. You know, when we're sitting here and having to read through stuff all night. If we have a chance to read it, then we're ready to go. We're out of here a little bit sooner. And then, I guess my last thing is just, you know, I know Kyle sent out some emails. I'm sure his skin is thick. If you like what he said, it's discouraging, if you don't, if nobody answers them. So, I don't know who did, who didn't. If you don't like what he said, just say, "Hey, I don't like what you said. I disagree with you."
Well, we also have to be careful. We can't be deliberating the email.
I agree with that, 100%.
So, that's a person in form, so there are rules that we have to follow. So, he can share with all of us, and that's awesome, but maybe...
And I think maybe we should say that to him. Like, "Hey, I don't think this is appropriate." Um, or, or whatever, like, "Let's bring this to the table next time," or whatever, just...
What are you talking about?
Yeah, be careful about saying that.
The last thing, the last thing that you brought up.
Right.
Of an issue whenever it's presented on email, because it could be misconsidered as a vote.
Right, yeah, I do, I do totally agree with that. Like, if, if he sends out an email with, you know, whatever feedback, then we should at least respond with, "Yeah, I don't think this is, you know, let's be done with this." But ignoring it kind of works. He's a new member, you know?
Right.
Ignoring it kind of makes it...
Well, I, I took your email as informational. I, I didn't, I did not know you were looking for a reply.
No, that's not necessary, no. Absolutely not, no.
Perfect. Right, because we, we, we can't do that. But with that being said, if you are going to email, you do need to email all of us. Any one of us to live all the time.
Yep, absolutely.
They need to be individual. If you're gonna have a conversation about something, those are gonna be great conversations between two people locally.
Right, yeah, I do agree. Like, we do have to watch along.
Yeah, I want you to know, I'm gonna discuss this with Chris, because he knew about this two months ago. When I first, when they first returned the phone call to the office, and everybody got excited, because we were in telephone tag. But, you know, I don't know what I was saying, but I'm, you know, why would you...
But then I guess I say it.
I'm going to address it.
That's, that's fair. I mean, but, like, if, we just have to be more sharing of the stuff we're working on. If you're spinning, yeah, if you're spinning your wheels over here, putting hours and hours into something, and then he's spinning his wheels doing hours and hours on the same something just because we didn't share that information. You know, kind of wasting time and energy. And we could, like I said, if we're knocking on people's doors, we could look this way or that way then.
I appreciate you bringing it up a little.
No, I, I agree, you know, if the, and, and, and Kristen specifically asked me to look into, into Aldi for any reason other than that when I came to this meeting last month, I said I was looking into it, and he said, "Okay, let me know what you find." You know, I'm not sure what they're at, is working on, but I know it's fine. Because he, he, I guess he didn't, he...
Okay, so he put the condition on it. He didn't know what I was working on.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't imply that, he didn't know that you, what you found, but said, "Let me know, it's fine, keep me in look."
No, and I'm, I'm around the office a lot.
So, I guess it's...
So, yeah, so the only thing I say is...
And everybody in the office knew.
If he had put energy into it for this last month, and you'd already done it all, then he's, that's what he's...
But like, like Jenny was suggesting, is if we're working on something, let everybody know. Say, "Hey, let everybody know I'm working on Aldi. Don't go knocking on Aldi's door also."
And it was on the agenda.
Yeah, that's when I noticed it was on the agenda, so I was, I, I, when I saw it on the agenda, I said, "Oh, oh, okay, I better stop." And then I keep, when I begin, we're here last minute, so we kind of have issues.
Right, I was sick.
Yeah, and I agree.
You don't miss nothing.
After I saw that on the agenda, I completely stopped all my efforts.
That's all right. I got it.
I'll be honest, I thought that was the name of the attorney.
Aldi?
Aldis.
I thought the attorney was coming to the meeting. Isn't this the way he spells his name?
No, Al, that is...
It is A.D.I.S.
Oh, okay. So, I thought that the attorney was coming to the meeting. To be honest with you, I didn't think it was specific to, uh, to a business. I don't know the guy, you know, I, I just, I just, I'll just...
After that meeting, I actually sent you an email personally, um, Fisher makers, just directly, like, saying like, "Hey, I, you know, I was, I told you the email. I was looking into this. I heard you were, so, you know, let, let it be." Did you not give my email?
I didn't care about your email. I was sick.
Oh. I don't know what I'm saying, but, I mean...
Maybe I saw it. I was sick.
Well, that's a good example. I mean, if I sent you an email, I would appreciate a response from anybody at the commission, you know? That way, the whole other month, um, you know, not wondering if you were working on it, if you weren't working on it, if they told you no, if they told you yes, I mean, you know, so it just...
I still didn't write it on that. So, you know, so I did, you were, uh, on the team.
I, I know, maybe, maybe you even got it, that's all, so...
I think I, I saw your name.
But I, my, my expectation as a, as a commissioner here is, is I'm not just gonna sit here and be a voting member. I want to go out and do extra work.
Absolutely.
And, and be involved.
Absolutely.
So, I'm gonna be working on stuff, and I don't let you all know, but I'm working at it, and, you know, and likewise, so...
I think that's where we need to come up with goals and a plan, and, uh, that we follow ourselves and hold us accountable to those goals. Of just, you know, we, we accomplish what we set out to do, and that we're getting it done in a timely fashion and be done.
Yeah, have some results.
Yeah.
You know? And if you care about the...
You guys have results?
Um, how are ten minutes on managing the items?
Where are they at?
I'm with Georgie.
All the... My act's report already given. Okay, entertain our motion to adjourn.
Motion, uh, Nano.
Four seconds.
I'm ready.
Aye, you're mess.